Mayor Allen, it is three o'clock and you do have a quorum of council so you can start the meeting at your convenience.
Okay, can I have a mover and secondary to call the meeting to order, please? Council Ritchie, Council Ma Chapman, that the special meeting of the Council Township of Springwater of September thirteen, two thousand twenty-one come to order at three P M. All those in favor? That is carried. Due to COVID, we're taking necessary steps to limit in-person meetings. So we're having council meetings with council and staff participating electronically. You can watch the meeting live on the township's website, triple W Springwater dot C A. You can listen to the meeting live from telephone by calling six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight and use the I D. Eight nine four six seven zero four two seven five four. This option is available during the meeting and for those unable to watch or listen, you can see the video on the township's YouTube channel. Counsel, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? All right, seeing none, we will move into strategic priorities. C O Schmidt will introduce this item and lead council through the discussion. C O Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So before we get too far into today's discussion, I just wanted to provide some context to all members of council and senior staff. I'm sure some of you are probably wondering why we might be here today. So the intent of this exercise is really to commence our long-term strategic planning exercise for the township and it's really broken down into two main phases, if you will. So phase one is 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 today. So it will review the submissions received by members of council and the intent is to develop three to five priorities that council as a whole would like to achieve before the end of this term of council. And this will assist staff in in ensuring that all of our resources are aligned in moving the township forward and also assist council as well as staff to ensure that we're all rowing in the same direction over the course of the next year. And then the second phase is really it will consist of staff drafting and releasing an R F P. That will go out later this year to seek the services of a consultant to develop a community-based strategic plan for the township. And this plan will have a long-term vision. We're thinking twenty or thirty years and will involve a significant amount of public consultation engagement. And the intent will be to commence this public engagement or consultation early two thousand twenty-two with then drafting a strategic plan that will come to the new council for their review and approval in early two thousand twenty-three. The plan will include a number of strategic priorities, a number to be determined still, that will align with achieving the overall community vision. And each term of council will determine which priorities they would like to focus on with the full intent of trying to achieve the community's long-term vision for the township. So maybe I'll just pause there, Mr. Mayor, for a minute, just in case any members of council have any questions or clarification.
Okay, I'm not seeing any cards. Go ahead.
Okay, so let's let's get started with today's exercise, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just going to share my screen here. Can everybody see that there?
Okay. Yes.
So you you may recall, Mr. Mayor and members of council, that earlier this year, each member of council was requested to provide their top three to five priorities that they would like to see that each individually they would like to see accomplished before the end of this term of council. And so what staff has done here is we've consolidated all of these responses that we received and we've captured them in this chart that you're seeing here and it's also attached to our agenda today. So subsequent to receiving that and consolidating all those responses, staff went ahead and and looked at the different responses and each of each senior manager and or other staff member were assigned specific priorities to respond to and really was is more in line with their area of responsibility. So they were tasked with providing a response and those responses now are provided on this chart as well. And this information again has been shared with yourselves. So my intent is not to review each response today, but rather we would go through the chart and if members of council had any questions and required further clarification, we have staff members here, senior staff here to to assist and we would be more than happy to answer any of those questions or or further discuss. So really coming out of today's discussion, the aim or goal is to have three to five strategic priorities that council again as a whole agrees to trying to achieve before the end of this term of council. And in an effort to assist that conversation, senior staff has provided nine priorities that we felt were significant and appeared to align with what council's responses were. And with that, maybe, Mr. Mayor, we can go through the various areas of of that chart. And if there are specific questions, we'd have to answer those. So maybe we can just start with Council Cabrel's comments and my apologies, I'm not going to be able to see everybody here on the screen. So I'll ask you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to to let me know if there's any questions from members of council on Council Cabrel's or maybe page one here we'll start with.
Okay. I'm not seeing any cards. C O Schmidt.
Okay, yeah, everybody is. Can everybody see my screen changing here? Yeah, okay, we're good. How about the next page? Any questions from members of council regarding these items on this page?
Counsel Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. I have trouble seeing your screen, but I think if you're on my item number one, has that gone by yet?
No, we're on that page.
Okay, when I get there, I'll talk to you. Thank you.
Well, I think that there's unless there's any comment about Counsel Moore's one point, then you're on there, Counsel Hannah.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Allen. Um, I'd like to speak to about item number one that that I had there. I I appreciate the response. I was just not clear on my understanding of development charges and so on, even though I read that stuff a lot. The my impression over the years was that with development charges, we're lucky if we get anywhere between seventy and seventy-five percent. I know the Development Charges Act has changed now and we do collect money on some things that we couldn't before. There used to always be a mandatory ten percent discount. I believe that may have changed. So I'm just looking for some explanation as to what level of income do we get as opposed to what, as I said, development charges impression in the past was always that you're lucky if you got more than seventy-five percent. Am I safe in now believing that we get more than that?
C A or Director Ratigan, go ahead, whoever wants to address that.
I'll start, Mr. Mayor. And if if I misspeak, I'll definitely have Director Ratigan correct me. But my understanding is Counsel Hannah that through the changes, recent changes to the D C Act, essentially there were a number of soft services, as you indicated, so parks and and some of those other what we would return as soft service type of amenities did have a ten percent mandatory deduction. That is no longer in place. And so as that's one of the reasons, not the only reason, but one of the reasons that staff are currently working on updating our D C background study or our bylaw to ensure that we can actually collect as soon as possible the the hundred percent D Cs that are available to us there. So the additional ten percent that we wouldn't been able to collect before, we want to be in a position to be able to collect that. So to answer your question, yes, we should be collecting more than the seventy-five percent. Is it a hundred percent? There still are some areas of that that will see an exemption. But for the most part, we should be, our revenues for D C should be should be increasing over time.
Anything further, Director Ratigan?
Thank you through you, Mayor Allen. No, that is correct. We are updating our D C bylaw. However, the municipal act has already been updated to take away that ten percent. So we are now able to collect that ten percent. And we are moving forward with changing some of our policies in other areas as well. So everything that C O Schmidt said is correct.
Counsel Hannah.
Uh, thank you for the follow up. I I that was my impression as well. I just didn't know exactly how much would be collecting, but even with another ten percent, we're probably still going to have a deficit of ten or fifteen percent that we're going to have to collect taxes in order to pay for it. And my other thought when I read the read the responses, it gave me the impression that with the increased number of people moving here and the growth, that we'd be collecting more money for property taxes and that would have that have helped offset some of the infrastructure costs. But having said that, it's always been my belief from stuff that I've read that residential taxes only cover, if we're lucky, up to ninety percent of the services that we have to provide. So in addition to the shortfall, which I believe it's got to be ten to fifteen percent, as I stated, plus the shortfall in property taxes, we are going to be looking at some impact to our property taxes and how we're going to manage that in the future. I'm not sure, but I would like to hear some suggestions of what we have in mind other than just increasing taxes.
C O.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counsel Hannah. So Counsel Hannah, you you may recall through the long-range financial plan process, we did walk through a a number of various options and I think the response here was just essentially indicating that, you know, debt is something that obviously we would have to consider. Also, we are making changes to our our D C collections. So in the in right now, essentially what we do is we collect our D Cs upon building permit issuance. Whereas with the update to our D C bylaw, we are looking at collecting those that the hard surface components, so road, water, wastewater and storm at a at a a timeframe that's when the registration of the of the subdivision comes into play. So sooner than what we are today. In addition to that, you know, there are other options with respect to, in some cases, deferral of of capital projects. So in some cases, you know, some of these capital projects may not be able to proceed as quickly as as what we had planned. In addition to that, there there's ongoing discussions with the development community to the extent that the infrastructure benefits them. Then they need to be paying their their fair share upfront. And and that's essentially what's happening in Midhurst is is all of the for the most part, all of the water, wastewater and roads or transportation infrastructure is being up fronted by the by the development developers, development group. And essentially ongoing costs, so the operating cost and or the future replacement of those assets will be borne by the township. But our our residents will also be benefiting from those that infrastructure for the next ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years, depending on the type of infrastructure. So maybe I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor.
Follow on, Counsel Hannah.
Uh, thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't I won't drag this out any further, but I just want to be clear that when we get upfront payment, that just means that we won't get that money in in future years. So while it's nice to get it upfront, the long range is will still have an impact on our taxes, but maybe we're just deferring that impact. I believe that's my opinion anyway, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to make you aware that I I do recognize that staff are doing the best they can. And I know we're going to have to cut back on some of the things maybe that were in the long-range plan. If you want to suggest what they would be tonight, I'd appreciate it. But if you can, I understand that as well. But I do, as I said, I understand staff are on top of this and trying to do what they can. But my concern is going forward, we're going to have some major financial impacts, as I said in my comments, related to COVID nineteen as well as the future development. So I just suggesting, well, I might not be around in the next few years. Somebody's going to have to be on top of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, go ahead, Dan C O.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just turning to the next page, page four here. Additional comments from Counsel Hannah, O P P and other expenditures regarding consultants. So any other comments, questions, clarification?
Counsel Hannah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't let the consultant one go by. And I just seems to me over the years, and I think Perry can reflect on this, but over the last eleven years, seems to me that we're using a lot of consultants and and I'm not sure how else you can manage it, but I would even be supportive of having somebody qualified on staff that could fill in for the or take the place of outside consultants all the time. It just seems to me like it's a a lot of money we spend and having been a consultant, my staff, myself, I I know that it's a statement that's often made that consultants are just people you hire to tell you what you want to hear. In some cases, I think that is accurate. So I'm just hoping going forward, we can take a second look before we automatically every time something comes up on the agenda, say, suggesting we go to a consultant or we go and check the legal.
C O Schmidt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the comments, Counsel Hannah. And, you know, I think in most cases, you know, we try to, we try to use the resources in-house as much as we can, understanding that sometimes we don't have the expertise in in internal to be able to, you know, we have no legal expertise in-house to to deal with some of these legal matters that are coming to the township. So you know, by all means, we could look at bringing in an intern solicitor to the township. You know, and that may that may be something that we we need to consider on a go-forward basis is to bring that that individual in-house. The only challenge I find with that is is that sometimes you bring somebody in-house and they may not have the same level of expertise that you would have by using a a legal firm. So a legal firm typically will use the individual, but they also have access to other resources within their firm that could assist us should should the need arise. So that's typically from a legal perspective, why we've we've gone out to to legal. As it relates to some of the other consultants, again, it could be related specifically to, say, the official plan, which again, we have planning staff, but whether or not we have the expertise in-house to to go through with a full official plan is questionable. And some of the other consultants we bring on board, the more specific, in my understanding, the more specific to items that come up throughout the year, that again, we may not have the internal resources or in-house resources to be able to provide the information and or we may not have the expertise in-house. So again, it is something that we we try to keep a handle on as much as possible, but you know, ultimately, the use of of consultants also does come back to council for for your authorization. So at any time, if 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 council decides they don't want to proceed with a consultant, that would be an opportunity too for for council to say, say, to say no.
Counsel Cabral.
Thank you, Mayor Allen. The only comment with respect to this is I would like to point out that for me, there's a differentiation between consultants when council is involved in the procurement or selecting of a consultant through a R F P or or to to get one. However, we have ongoing consultant consulting fees that simply just seem to happen during the due course of business, say, for engineering firms and other consultants that we we kind of tend to frequent on a on a a basis, even with the D Cs here, where these costs aren't necessarily coming before council for approval. So but at the end of the day, at the end of the fiscal year, those consulting fees start to add up. And so I I kind of concur with Counsel Hannah in that we have to look at not necessarily changing, but certainly keeping a closer rein on the amount of funds that go to a consultant. And as Counselor Hannah has pointed out also to to see whether or not maybe some of that may be brought more in-house if possible. I certainly agree with C O Schmidt that we may not have the expertise all the time. I also agree with the caveat that if you hire a lawyer in-house, they may not have the expertise all the areas we would require it. So we'd still be reaching out, but there should be a bit of a balance somewhere. So I'm just kind of saying on the ones that are ongoing, those are ones that I think council needs to be apprised of a little bit more frequently so that we can keep be more apprised of how much we're spending on consultants.
Director Adigan, did you have anything to add?
No, I just wanted to add that I I do believe the D C study was provided for as part of the two thousand twenty-two budget and definitely want to reiterate what C O Schmidt said, that staff do try to do as much as we can in-house. We are limited in terms of resources, but we do also try and think outside the box and apply for grants wherever possible. So the first S D R was fully funded by a grant and the second S D R will also be fully funded by a grant as well. So we do try to to limit or mitigate some of those, some of those costs as much as possible.
I find it, I'm I'm trying to think of consultants' reports where we didn't have heads-up as council and input and approval in this last term. I I I think we have been vetted and 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 reviewed and voted on these these things as they have arisen. Follow on, Counsel Cabral.
Thank you, Mayor Allen. And and you're quite right, but I just want to step back. When we're talking about the grants, the grants weren't necessarily specific for service delivery reviews. It was still funds that were appropriated at council's discretion towards those service delivery reviews. So that's just the one comment. And I I'm just kind of speaking at some of the outside agencies that that we have, I don't know how better to phrase it other than say similar to a lawyer where they're on a retainer and we could reach out from time to time. A lot of times, those smaller amounts that come back for advice on this or advice on that, that does add up over the course of the year. And I think at the end of the year, when we talked about consulting fees, it may look a lot larger than what council may have been aware of. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, I think we can move on then to the next, the next point. C O Schmidt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just turning to the next page here, page five is just the final comments made by Counselor Hannah and then a couple of comments from the deputy mayor to start off. So any questions or clarification required here?
Welcome, Counsel Moore. She had Counsel Moore informed me that she was going to be a little delayed. So thank you for that. Go ahead, C O.
Okay, no comments or questions here, I guess, assume, Mr. Mayor.
So on page six of fourteen now, are we?
Yes, correct. So these are just, again, follow-up comments from the deputy mayor. Any questions or clarification required here?
What we're doing, Counsel Moore, is we're going through that summary that we all received and have read. And if there are any questions or further comments, then we're raising them. Go ahead.
Okay, so then we're on page seven here, Mr. Mayor. So again, your comments that were received items here regarding strategic plan, which I kind of touched on at the beginning of today's session, as well as on this particular page, Hasty Track comments.
Counsel Cabral.
Sorry, Mayor Allen, I apologize. I don't need to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, C O.
Okay, and just on page eight here, again, further comments from the mayor regarding service delivery, human resources, as well as finance and and budgeting type type items. Any questions or clarification required here?
Okay.
No, okay. Moving on to page nine, again, more financial related questions regarding long-range financial plan. We kind of were discussing with Counsel Hannah earlier. Any further comments or questions required here? Clarification. Again, my apologies, I can't see everybody, so.
No, not seeing any cards on this page.
Okay, this page here, number ten, is just a continuation of the answer, staff's answer on. So if we've moved to page eleven, talk about infrastructure deficit and we talk about the O P and the official plan review. Again, any questions or comments, clarification required from council?
There are none.
No, okay. Page twelve, page twelve, we got a few things here. So first one is just the cannabis and proceeding with that. Service delivery review or the efficiency audit, swally drain, N V C A and S S C A as well as D E R C. Again, any questions, comments, clarification required from council on these items?
Seeing none.
Okay, moving on to page thirteen. So again, policing question. Updates on Hillsdale and Elmville crossings, Elmville lift station, update on that project. Broadband, Midhurst Secondary Plan and uh, planning policies, I guess, with as it relates to settlement areas, roadside settlement areas. So actually, sorry, the last one is more with regards to the withdrawal of the appeal on the O P A thirty-eight. Again, any questions? Clarification required?
That last point, it it with the with that withdrawal of the O P A thirty-eight, my understanding is that Director Spagnuolo and planning have been inundated and continue to be inundated with a lot of interest in in planning developments in in different areas outside of the settlement area. So it's it's coming up with a with a strategy to to deal with these interests so that time is not wasted by the planning department in trying to fend off or deal with maybe unclear mandates or or rules of the road with respect to these sorts of development applications.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think if Director Spagnuolo's on here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this this item here, what Director Spagnuolo had responded to is more trying to develop a strategy as it relates to development that's within the the secondary plan area that aren't necessarily part of the servicing plan right now. So it's really trying to figure out, you know, how do the, how do we how do we add on these additional requests, knowing that they may not be, they may not have formed part of the the servicing group in in Midhurst specifically. So I think your other question is is another, maybe another item that comes up later. It's more your other question, meaning outside settlement areas. This is, this is, I think, is deals with more inside the settlement area specifically.
Right then.
Okay, if we switch to page fourteen, then again, we just have the last two items here with the active Elmville active seniors residence as well as economic development activities. And this kind of speaks to the item that I was speaking to about development outside settlement areas. So any questions or comments or clarification required here? I'll get into the top priorities in a minute here.
Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so so thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So essentially, what staff did is we we reviewed all of the comments that were received by council and we also took a view from our lens as as to what we thought were some of the strategic priorities that we we could be or council could be focusing on over the over the next year, let's call it. And so some of the items that we came up with, which would align with some of the comments made with with the comments we just went through is is the first one. And again, these are in no specific order. It's just the way they kind of came up. So items that that staff have brought forward and thought that council could make a decision on today was to continue progress on phase one and two development of the community hub or the HD track. The second item is the completion of the service delivery view, which includes the I T master plan. The third priority would be the completion of the official plan. The fourth item would be the completion of the comprehensive compensation review. Number five was, this came up a little bit, is the enhanced staff recognition program, 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 sorry, and negotiate a collective agreement. And we can, maybe I can explain that a little bit more once we get through this, what I mean by that. Continue to manage growth in a sustainable manner. Finalize the formation of the new O P P detachment board. Number eight is continue developing our asset management roadmap, which would include our township facilities. So I E, what are we going to do with the the future of of the Grenfell Community Hall? And then lastly, the number nine would be the creation of a financial policy framework are are the priorities that that staff have come up with. And again, if I go back to number five, just enhancing staff recognition program and negotiating collective agreement. Again, you know, now that we're kind of in this process here, you know, we will continue to to further develop and and enhance our staff recognition program, program, sorry. However, as we are kind of in a transition period right now, kind of almost in a pause until we we enter discussions with Q P. Yeah, not much movement will be made on on some of these benefits. benefits and other programs until such time we've had an opportunity to, uh, have further discussions with QP. Um, so I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor, and by all means, uh, maybe we can have a discussion about, uh, what council thinks about these top priorities. And again, these are ones that we came up with. There may be ones that we have missed and, and council feels that there's other, uh, uh, higher priorities than these. Um, by no means are we saying these are all, every, all nine of them have to be done. All nine of them are, are being worked on. Um, but again, I think the intent here today is really try to get an understanding as to where council's position is on these so that we can all ensure that we're, again, moving in the right direction here over the next, uh, over the next year, and hopefully we can see some success and progress for, uh, on some of these priorities.
C O Schmidt, how, um, confident are you that all of these can be accomplished by October two twenty-two?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just looking at, so with number one specifically, um, parts of, 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 of phase one can be completed, uh, and progress can be made. Obviously, within phase one is the fire station. And, and we're working on that and the intent is to try to have shovels in the ground at some point in twenty twenty-two. But, uh, to be honest with you, I don't see, uh, a new structure or a new facility being built or constructed uh, within the next, uh, twelve months. Uh, that'll likely be, uh, the aim would be sometime in twenty twenty-three to have, uh, a new fire facility, uh, constructed depending on obviously the process that we're continuing to walk through. So, um, the engagement piece, obviously that's on, on the agenda for, for Wednesday and, uh, subject to council's consideration or direction will determine the path for phase two. Um, service delivery is obviously underway. Uh, council has, or council again, on Wednesday will be uh, looking at a recommendation from the ad hoc committee, uh, to, uh, to, uh, award the service delivery piece, uh, uh, to a consultant. And then the IT master plan, I believe, is coming forward for award, uh, for council's consideration in early October. The completion of the official plan, my understanding is, is that, uh, we're, or, or set right now to hopefully have something to council by the end of this year, if not early twenty twenty-two. Uh, once that, once council gives us direction or approval of that, it'll go to, uh, county. And then really it's in county's hands to determine the status of, of our official plan. Uh, the comprehensive compensation review that will be completed this year. Again, the collective agreement will be starting, uh, shortly. And so, uh, those discussions will be ongoing for the next few months, I assume. Uh, and then a staff recognition program, again, uh, we will, uh, continue, continue to enhance and, and develop, uh, that, that program. Uh, managed growth in a sustainable manner. Again, that's just ongoing and, and will continue, obviously with, with Midhurst and other development in Elmville and Hillsdale and across the community or the township, uh, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to ensure that that's managed in a sustainable manner. Uh, formation of the new OPP detachment board. Somewhat out of our control, to be honest with you, uh, there is a report, uh, on Wednesday night's, uh, agenda, just advising of a slight change in the, in the composition of the board, uh, removing, uh, we had suggested three provincial appointees. They're now indicating them, uh, them being the ministry, indicating that we only need two provincial, uh, appointees. Uh, so hopefully, uh, in early twenty twenty-two, we'll start to see, if not before that, see something from the ministry on the formation and, and what that's going to look like. Uh, continuing our asset management roadmap. So, uh, there is, uh, a revised, uh, date of July first, twenty twenty-two, that we have to have our core asset management plan in place. It was originally this past July, but they, they did amend that. And so staff is working feverishly to, uh, to achieve, uh, this new timeframe. Uh, and again, on with regards to the Grenfell Community Hall, uh, as mentioned in, in the chart here today, uh, we did have a little bit of a pause on that, uh, on that, uh, my project, just due to some changes of staffing, but we are looking at re-engaging the consultant. And the first priority is to assess the Grenfell Community Hall, and hopefully we can have something back to council in the next, well, hopefully before the end of this, this year. Uh, whether or not it'll be at the start of budget, I'm not sure yet. It's, uh, we still are trying to re-engage the, the consultant, uh, to see what their availability is. And then the last one, the creation of a financial policy framework. I think that's something we could start to, uh, to, uh, work on and, and hopefully have accomplished, uh, or a good portion of accomplished before the end of this term of council. So hopefully that addresses, uh.
Okay, uh, comments, uh, from council? Counselor Cabral?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Allen. Actually through you to.
If, if I may just interrupt, I think, uh, Clerk Gainesworth has wanted me to get a mover and secuder to get this on the floor for discussion, please.
Yes, please.
Deputy Mayor Coughlin, Counselor Moore, uh, go ahead, Counselor Cabral.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Allen. I'm just, uh, looking over these. I, I know that number five, um, I mean, the collective agreement, uh, that's going to be a, a, a new item per se and, uh, does kind of change things up. And I'm just curious to know from C O Schmidt, uh, whether or not, uh, there will be some kind of, uh, uh, dialogue with council on, uh, what might be proposed as far as, as, uh, as, um, agreement options, uh, to them, uh, prior to that actually taking place. And, uh, the only reason I say that is, um, we're, we're going to end up with, uh, with two groups of individuals, if I'm not mistaken. We're going to end up with non-union employees and union employees. And, um, I, I just want to recognize that the non-union employees that, uh, we've had in the past, there have been certain things that, uh, township has done for them that might not necessarily be something that would be included in a, a collective bargaining agreement. So I just want to get some sense whether or not that will come before council, uh, possibly at a different type of a session, uh, for open discussion at that time.
C O?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and through you to Counselor Cabral. So yes, Counselor Cabral, there's actually, we're planning on having a, a bit of a an update, uh, to council on Wednesday night, uh, to discuss this matter further. But to your point too, yes, the intent is, is that, uh, any future uh, mandates, if you will, would need to come to council for, uh, for your consideration. And then uh, staff would have to bring that back to the table to, to further discuss. So you're definitely going to be involved. Uh, we're just working out the specifics right now with our solicitors. And then, uh, again, as, as we, uh, learn more, we'll definitely bring, uh, bring you back into loop or bring you into the loop. So.
Thank you. Counselor Anna?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, at first I'd like to say I think all the submissions are excellent and I would like to see them all considered to be priorities from one extent to the other. But, uh, I would like to speak to that item number five that staff identified as a priority as well. Um, further to what Counselor Cabral said, I think it might be appropriate time before the next budget for us to look at how some of those services are being provided and to see if, uh, outsourcing is an option we should be considering.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Deputy Mayor Coughlin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Allen, and through you, with the, uh, asset management roadmap, um, understanding that that is not specifically to indicate surplus properties, is there a separate then process, um, the comments that were made, there was no specific dates, and I do know that staff continue to work on it. Um, but if it's not on the strategic list, then would it still be an opportunity for this council to address?
C O Schmidt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Deputy Mayor, um. So I, I, yeah, it's absolutely something that staff continue to work on, uh, and, and we can bring forward, uh, you know, a, a report to council for your consideration. Um, you know, as you're aware, we've had some, uh, some changes or, and some, uh, some, uh, challenges, I guess, with, with, uh, some staff. And just again, keeping the momentum going with, with some of these initiatives. You know, we've had some changeover and, uh, just trying to make sure that staff or new staff are brought up to speed o- on this initiative. So, um, and what I mean is, is some of our existing staff have had to be pulled off of this project to deal with other priorities. So uh, definitely we can look at trying to bring something forward, uh, for this term of council or try to uh, begin to address. I, I'm not sure whether or not, uh, well, I guess it's subject to council as to how far you want to go with this. Uh, but it, it is a process that we would have to, we would have to undertake and it would take some time to, uh, to, uh, to, to complete the process. So I, I think we can bring something forward to council to start, at least start the, 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 the conversation or continue the conversation. I, I shouldn't say start, we, we've already started it. It's, it's really continue that conversation. So um, we can definitely have it as, as part of our, uh, um, business plan for twenty twenty-two to, to start to, to bring this forward again. So.
Counselor Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Allen. I, I just want to be clear, a, a little ambiguous, uh, for me on what was just discussed. Are we talking about surplus township lands here again? Okay, and the only reason, uh, I didn't comment on that is, uh, it said that it would be something be brought forward before council for us to discuss. And I just want to take you back a little while ago where, um, there was some surplus land that someone had uh, identified and was asking for. And, uh, we had a good look at it and all of a sudden came to the realization that we were being short-changed by likely two, three hundred thousand dollars because of the manner in which this piece plus plan was going to be afforded them. So I just want to be very cautious that, um, uh, we don't turn around and start listing surplus land, uh, looking at it as a pot of gold because once it's gone, it's gone. So, um, I just, uh, wanted to make that comment before, uh, before letting that go. I wasn't one hundred percent sure that that's what we were speaking about, but since it is, just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Moore?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Allen, through you to C O Schmidt, um, regarding the asset management roadmap then and the Grenfell Hall. We know that the, the money is already set aside from the developers that we've earmarked for the Grenfell Hall. So should that actually be a part of the asset management roadmap or should that be a separate project that, that we incorporate into the budget upcoming?
C O?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Moore. So Counselor Moore, uh, sorry, maybe let me clarify. So although it's part of, we, we kind of rolled it into the asset management roadmap because it is talking about our assets in general. But the intent is, is that we do have this facility assessment audit that uh, council did award, uh, to a consultant back in, I want to say, June of this year. And, uh, right now it's being put on pause just because of, again, some, some staff changeover. So the intent now is to actually re-engage that consultant and the first priority is to assess the Grenfell Hall. So the idea would be is, is that, uh, hopefully we can get this, uh, get the, the consultant engaged or re-engaged here in the next week or so with the full intent of getting something, an assessment done on the Grenfell Hall, which hopefully, again, I don't know how long these assessments take, but if it's a couple of weeks, even if it's a month, you know, we're looking at, uh, probably the end of October. Uh, so we, we hopefully we can try to bring something to council, I would hope in, in sometime in November on the status of the Grenfell Hall. It won't include, we won't have assessments done for all of our other facilities and, and that's fine because those don't have to, uh, be actually assessed until twenty twenty-three, I think now is the deadline or twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we have some time on the rest of those, but the idea would be is, is that the Grenfell Hall be prioritized, uh, uh, as, as the number one priority. Again, so at least we understand and, and council can understand too as to a third party coming in assessing it, what is the status of it. I think visually we all have our ideas of what it may look like. But, uh, again, without knowing the real, uh, nuts and bolts of, of the, the full assessment, I think it would, might be premature for, for council to make a decision without having that information. So.
Okay, um, all right then. So are we ready then for the, uh, the recommendation? We have a mover and secuder. The council hereby identifies the following strategic priorities for the, let me just get this down here. So don't, with the remainder of two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two term of council. Number one, continue progress on phase one and phase two development of the community hub, Hasty Track. Number two, completion of the service delivery review, including IT master plan. Number three, completion of official plan. Number four, completion of comprehensive compensation review. Number five, enhanced staff recognition program slash negotiate collective agreement. Number six, continue to manage growth in a sustainable manner. Number seven, finalize formation of new OPP detachment board. Number eight, continue developing our asset management roadmap, which includes township facilities, i.e. future of Grenfell Community Hall. And number nine, creation of financial policy framework. All right, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I have a mover and secorder for the confirmatory bylaw? Counselor Moore, Counselor Ritchie, that bylaw two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight now to confirm and adopt the proceedings of council in a special meeting held September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one listed herein. You signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All those in favor? I was carried and a mover and secorder for adjournment of this meeting? Deputy Mayor Coughlin, Counselor Ma Chapman, that the special meeting of the township of Springwater does now adjourn at three forty-four PM to meet again in regular meeting on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty PM. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.